Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
After a long holiday. Regular meeting, County Commissioners' Court, September the eighth. We have a board established, Commissioner Corvallis, Commissioner Arthur here. And we have Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Reeves, also President, Attorney General Mike Gott, Engineering Administrator David Douglas, Fire, Marshallville, Henry Miller, and our County Treasurer, Ken Harris, and Captain Tony Knox, Liberty County Sheriff's Office. This time with all rise, we'll have the pledges to be disclosed. And that is the case.
Please place the Texas flag.
Let the flag of the United States of America be lifted above your heads. It will be promoted with righteous hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Please place the Texas flag.
Our honor, Texas flag, under the flag of the United States of Texas, from today, under God, one indivisible.
First, please.
Your heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, Lord, thanking you for this beautiful day you've given us. Thank you for all the blessings that you've given us, Lord. Thank you for sending your Son, Jesus, to die for our sins. We know if we do your will, Lord, we can be with you in heaven. Lord, I ask that this time would you be with the judge, the commissioners, to say, make decisions affecting the county, give them the wisdom, Lord, to do what's right for everyone, Lord? We thank you for their service. Lord, I ask that you be with our nation, with our county, and the civil unrest. I ask, Lord, that we can find a peaceful agreement to everything that's going on. I also ask, Lord, for a cure, a vaccine for the pandemic that's affecting so many people, Lord. Lord, please forgive us when we fall short, in your Son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Notice his propretations. A little comment. How you doing today, sitting back there?
Doing well, sir.
How things up in Clayton, the C I S D?
Other than a few road issues, we're all right.
Yes, sir, I understand that. Good to have you with us, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
First item, number six, consent agenda. Everyone have to look over the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, and Duane, have any items?
Yes, I have one. It's to Rabba Kistner for a soil test at the new sheriff's department. It's for eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
What's the name again on there, Duane?
Rabba, R A B A, Kistner, K I S T N E R.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
Five, issue the three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. You remember a few weeks ago, we came before you and requested permission to spend some money for the day that a police car or a cop sent in another type of system? Well, they found after, I'm not going to speak to this, but I would, but after we bought those two items, they weren't, I guess the best way to put it, they weren't talking appropriately with their court system. So this expenditure is to help that system work in concert with the court system, particularly. Can you, is that?
The old system, this is what we had now, we're just, we go to, we had that system for ever and a day, but it takes to transfer over so that we don't have to go and make three or four different copies. We have to have the bridge, and to make that bridge, it's very expensive. It's a one-time cost, but for them to bridge it, we have to spend that kind of money because they have to rewrite some of the software shit to make it be a campaign. Like what the constable office had it, their system, it was over hours, you will, people.
The other expense there is for laptops. It's six laptops for the six attorneys in the office. Now, Nick Dennis, we had one or two that went down. Those all six were purchased at the same time, so this is kind of a preemptive to replace all six now.
I move a consent agenda with this issue.
Second, okay.
Motion, Greg. Approved. Approved. All favor say aye.
Aye. Likewise, aye.
Thank you, Lou. With the motion, Greg. Regular agenda, number seven, one. We're setting the 2020 tax rate for Liberty County, Texas, and the public hearing for September 22nd, 2020, eight forty-five a.m. And when you have a tax increase, you have to do things a little bit differently. It's different notifications, appropriate notifications. But when you don't have a tax increase, you don't tax it. And I believe this time, frankly, if I'm wrong, Duane, but I believe we even have something better than the old tax rates. So I believe in that. But we do need to set the tax rate for Liberty County and set a public hearing for this tax rate, September 22nd, at eight forty-five a.m. Matthew, is that the way you look at it? Duane?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Got motion, Bruce, second, Greg, to approve, setting the public hearings and setting the tax rates as a public hearing, well, actually, hearing, tax rate, public hearing. At eight forty-five, on the 22nd of September. All favor say aye. Likewise, aye, that motion carries, thank you. Number seven, two, considered approved. The order designated the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, those days on which Commissioners' Court of Liberty County, Texas, will be in the regular chart. And this is the same as it's been, well, not quite a hundred and eighty-four years. It's what we do, everybody. Well, it's the court's pleasure.
With the approval, second.
Got motion, Greg, second, Bruce, to approve. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, aye. That motion carries, thank you, Jim. Number three, consider and approve the 2021 holiday schedule for Liberty County. I hope you all had the opportunity to look over that. Got motion, Greg. Thank you, Bruce, to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, aye. That motion carries, thank you. Number seven, four. Hazard pay, multiple departments consider and approve hazard pay policy for any county department whose department head or elected official decides to award it in consideration of any necessary budgetary transfers to affect the purposes of the policy. There's a couple of these, and I'm going to get down to the bottom of it, maybe in a minute. Matthew?
That, I'm not sure if I have a different version of the, of the agenda today. Mine says consider an improved resolution authorizing hazard pay to employees in departments, excluding any departments which receive an award of hazard pay, to be paid from excess funds from the fiscal year budget of the district attorney.
That is what it says.
He must have got the Tyler one that didn't print out.
That's the one mine says. Which is, like I said, I've offered that before. I don't know how my excess would pay for the entire county. If it does, great. I don't think that's possible. But again, I know no department that reached out to me, and I won't end on that, besides the constables. So, and I've already said that if I had, if I had to give you a list or order, constable's offices first, and then after that, whoever else asked, no one else has asked, I will say that.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
I'll pass this last court. Is it going to be effective from last court or this court to do this?
It can only be effective for the departments that were mentioned at last court, which were, I think, four of the constable offices, three plus county attorney and district attorney. So, my understanding, Duane, break me if I'm wrong, it looks like the numbers for everybody else, for starting from today to the end of this fiscal year, three, you know, three weeks away, is somewhere around ninety thousand.
Right, there's enough surplus in the, in the district attorney's office to do this. So let me, so we're going to pay the county attorney, from last court, county attorney and district attorney's office, and constables four, five, and six, correct? Or was it three constables? How many constables was it?
Are you talking about the ones that were specifically put on the agenda?
Last, last time. I know there was four, three, and I think y'all might have added one. I'm not for sure.
Two times.
It was two, two times ago, because the original was not placed. I didn't do the language, and it did not list every constable's office. And then when we came back the last time, we asked for all the constable's offices to be in there.
Okay, yeah, might have been all.
But you're talking about the very first time it was on the agenda?
All right. So, the start, I'm just trying to get the start date down. It's going to be the last Commissioners' Court for y'all's two offices and all the constables. And from today's date, it'll be for everybody else that wants to participate, correct?
That's what I understand.
Okay.
Again, I haven't gotten, I've gotten no requests or any other. I have none.
So we're just going to do the county attorney, district attorney, and all the constables, correct?
So, I mean, I think a motion here could be something like a, a, a motion that says, if a department notifies the treasurer's office effective today, if they wish to participate, then their employees shall be paid according to the same hazard pay schedule which is approved for the sheriff's department. And then all, or all that will be paid from the excess in the district attorney's.
Okay, I'm just, okay, so.
And has other funds that can cover it?
Yes.
So, okay, so that's what we're going to do. It's going to be from last Commissioners' Court, DA, county attorney, and all constables. And everybody else, if they notify the treasurer's office today, they'll be eligible for it. Okay, so, all right. And then we're going to need a, a budget, I mean, another meeting, probably, maybe Friday, where I can do a budget amendment for this.
We're asking for the same rates, eight dollars for all law enforcement, police officers, I think that's what the sheriff's saying, and four dollars for everyone else.
All right, okay.
Is there enough money in it to do that for everybody to do that?
Yes, there is enough money.
What is wrong with the department status up there?
There is enough money. There's enough money.
I think because of both of your ends and twenty weeks, you're right, twenty-two minutes.
You sure we're not losing sight to taxpayers' money? When we say excess funds, that you're beginning budget, you're going to have money left over your budgeting for that entire year. Every year, we depend on this excess budget to go back in to help us for the next year or so. So, I mean, what we're considering is, we have, let's not lose sight that this is taxpayers' money. Due now to COVID, we have people that's lost their jobs, their cars, their homes that hasn't had the opportunity. Taxpayers pay us well for doing the job, we've done the job. Now we're asking for having this effect, I just don't quite understand.
Certainly, and if you had to go back to the sheriff's office, wasn't, if you didn't change the rules about the sheriff's office, no other fucker, I don't think would be asked.
So maybe the sheriff's office had no choice but to have boots on the ground, like.
I don't know, so, we never closed.
If you remember, my argument was just that, you do this down, you don't care worms, can't put the lid back on, simple as that. Because, Judge, of course, my office has not applied for these funds and really don't intend to. They showed up to work, they worked half, half the schedule, they got a fifty percent off, they never missed a check. And again, I'm not saying that, I just don't want to make sure how we're defining the hazard. I understand if law enforcement is out during the 24/7 that they get the younger emergency situation. I know, speaking of my staff was exposed to emergency situations. We were open from eight to four thirty, close to half hour for lunch. And actually, we're afforded a lot of time off. We've been on the fifty percent schedule from March 23rd. I haven't calculated the number of hours, but really, I felt like my staff, actually, by showing up to work, they got paid, they got all the benefits, and they actually got off half the time. So I'm not trying to diminish any other department. I'm just saying, I hate that my department hears, hey, why didn't you go to that forest and give us that extra four dollars? And to me, I can answer that, and I will answer that today. This is not something I felt like was defined, but I was asking for some clarification. What was, what is considered hazard duty? I mean, every day you go to the tax office, that kind of thing's a little hazard duty, but that's not near to diminish what we're talking about here. It's a whole different category. So if I can give some clarification on that, I appreciate it for me, be able to talk to my staff, and I think any other department that's in that same position, other than law enforcement. And so I, that's all I was trying to.
We got to remember too, it's not that pay. It's only paid from the day that the court approves it going forward. When we keep talking about the sheriff's office or whatever departments were open during the time, they're not being paid extra for that time. They're being paid extra for the period of time when the court approves it, going forward, which every department was open, as far as I know, from that point in time. There wasn't just one that was normal business. They all were from the point in time it was approved.
But we were open eight to four thirty.
Let me, let me clarify something. We're paying them from the date it's, the services that are being performed now. We're not paying them for services that were performed during the shutdown because that would be illegal. We're paying them for what is done at the time that they're working now forward, or when we approve the sheriff's department from the time forward. So when y'all are talking about paying them for working when we were closed, y'all are describing an illegal act, that we done been down that road before.
Okay, so, you know, can we give a definition, going forward, what is considered hazard pay to qualify for? So you're saying if we don't put in for it now, we're not eligible if we can get into hazard duty? So I would just clarify.
We're paying them for working from this day forward, and for the constables, and the county attorney and district attorney's office, from when y'all approved it last time. We're not, we can't go back in time and say, well, he worked, they worked. Well, basically, we're all working right now.
I understand that. Can you define what is hazard duty going forward? I mean.
That's up to, I mean, this is a decision for Commissioners' Court, but I mean.
That's what I'm asking for, you know, to make sure that, I understand what we're actually asking for. Right now, I don't, again, I'm just going back. I know it has to be from Commissioners' Court to actually going forward, but what is, what are we asking for? I guess it's some clarification. Maybe I'm in the dark on this, but I'm just trying to, if I'm trying to make a decision today by four thirty or five o'clock, to see if my staff is participating in this, I'd like a little clarification from the court.
I would think the court's defined it, and I'm not a speaker, but if I'm wrong, the police is awarding during this disaster declaration, because this has been declared a disaster for all intents and purposes.
Yeah, that I agree, that's it. You show up, show up to work, that's it. Going on my definition of it? It's wiping out my circus, period. So you're saying if we show up forty hours, we'll get four dollars an hour on top of it? So instead of making sixteen dollars an hour, then we'll get twenty dollars an hour? And then all the benefits will be tied to that as well, and all the retirement and all these things? So I'm just asking, I mean, I'm not trying to pick a fight here. I'm just trying to say, I want some clarification, and I, I can tell you that my staff, my department, would not be participating in that because we have been paying, and we'll get paid. Now, if something comes up in the road where they got to get out and block traffic or do something that is exposing them to danger, which is trying to find out, what is it? So, so you're saying simply by showing up to work, you're going to get an extra four dollars an hour under emergency status, and it doesn't change your job one bit in my office? You're still working the same?
Rick, if that's the case, then don't ask for it.
I didn't hear.
So if that's the case, then don't ask for it.
Okay, that's all I was clarifying, thank you. Now, that, I can cite many, many different departments that worked during this COVID problem. Mercy Management, but for one, we started on March the third. It's when we pushed the button, and I know that group is not taking a day off. Except for one that actually was exposed and had to take off two weeks. But as far as Krista and Danielle, I mean, we were there every day. Deedee and Mo was the same thing, never taking a day off, we were here the entire time. It, that goes along with the, with the job itself. My phone rings, it doesn't matter if it's Sunday morning at six, it's going to ring, so you're on duty no matter what. Was that a COVID exposure potential? Heck, yeah, anybody's going to have it. But this, this is the kind of stuff where you open a can of worms like we did previous. And don't get me wrong, I understand that chief, lovely, sheriff, you know, asking for extra to help out. But we voted years ago, I know five years ago, five and a half years ago, to not do this ever again. And here we are, back to that same thing. So it, it, I've spoken about these, you get off into the circus as far as the budget goes. That's what we use to make sure things balance, or actually, not only balance, but far exceed a balance. And it provides a circus that goes back into the, the fund balance. And that's what gives us those great S and P, standards, ratings. That's how we can get the odds of these there back. That's my viewpoint. I look at the dollars and cents of it, and I also look at the heartstrings of taxes as well. But it's going to be the court's pleasure, whatever it is, and I need a motion and a second. You don't need to vote on this, let's put it to bed.
I make the motion that we approve this, Greg. It's a, the salary's already budgeted for this year, fixing to enter into a new budget. And so I make the motion, we approve this, with the exception of, starting today, anyone else that feels that there is a need for hazard duty pay, that they contact the treasurer's office. And if, if so, then that pay will start as today, until the end of the fiscal year.
That's a motion. You have a second. We'll give it a little bit there, guys. Anybody need a break? We have a motion before the court, still waiting on second. All right, not any second, that motion down for lack of second.
Let me make this clear, Jay. As it stands right now, we're all paying the county, county attorney, district attorney, and all the companies, right?
You're breaking up again, Duane.
Matthew, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, that's my understanding, because we have the prior, for county, county attorney, district attorney, and several constables. And so this would exclude county clerk, district clerk, treasurer's office, and any other department, I'm not thinking of auditor's office, et cetera, Ricky Brown's office.
It would include our engineer's office?
Engineers, engineering permitting, yep.
When those good folks are all out there in the, in the public, taking care of business and doing their inspections and dealing with all these individuals, and we don't have a second. Is that correct, Matthew?
That is my understanding.
Thank you.
That's that.
Right, sir.
Motion down for lack of second. Number five, consider and approve Texas' fine service agreement annual renewal. That's just what it is, annual renewal. I'll have the, in your package, you have the information.
Has this changed, Tony?
Yes, sir.
Take a motion to approve.
Motion, Bruce, to approve, second, Greg. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, aye. Number six, consider and approve payment to Harris County Radio Services. Any calls to be shared is followed, City of Dayton's ten thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, City of Liberty, twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-five, and Liberty County Place, fifty-four nine twenty thirty-three. Just like we did last year, and pretty soon, I'm hoping we have our own radio tower, and we can send this one back. But I think we're two years away, Sheriff.
Awesome. It's court's made a motion to approve. Second.
Motion, Bruce, second, Greg, to approve. All favor say aye.
Aye.
And likewise, aye, that motion is carried, yes, thank you. Seven, consider and approve annual selection of employees for the sixth league full review committee. I have this nice little box that, this here, does this one every year? You over there?
Yes, sir. I am here, and we need you to pull out three names. The first two will be the regular members of the committee, and the last one will be the alternate.
Joshua Mitchell. Cheryl Connor. Frederick Byrd.
Okay, Judge, thank you very much.
I think you might need a motion to approve. Take a motion to approve.
Got motion, Bruce, second, Greg, to approve the sixth league full review committee. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, aye. Number eight, consider and approve the airlock between Liberty County, Cosmo Precinct five, and Target, I S D. Consider approve the airlock between Liberty County Cospel precinct five and Target High I C. Will approve. Take a Bruce, all favor say aye. Likewise, Dave, that motion carries. Nine, consider approve open enrollment for PAC, Texas Association of Counties cyber security training. Will fill six Texas government code two zero five four point. All requires all county elected officials and local government employee who has access to a local government computer system or database to complete annual cyber security training course. The deadline, June fourteenth, twenty twenty one. And, like I like, y'all got the.
Take a motion, Joe Bruce.
Got a motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve, all favor say aye. Likewise, Dave. Number ten, consider approve distributing weekly. Sixty dollars received in unpaid capital credit distributions from the state. Ten thousand four hundred and thirty three dollars will be donated to Casa, and ten thousand four thirty three will be donated to Bridge Haven.
Thank you.
Got a motion from Greg, second from Leon. To approve, all favor say aye. Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven. Consider approve health services agreement between Liberty County and Southern Health Partners Incorporated for the necessary medical care for inmates and detainees of Liberty County Jail. First of twenty twenty, and Penny, I know you're here to give us a little enlightening report of what we're gonna do with this, because we have to have it.
Yes, sir, Judge, and, and Court, and good morning. We, I think we've gotten everything that we required for our medical, our jail medical in the twenty page that we have right now. There is some things that I sent to our county attorney, Matthew Poston, to review, and it was under our prescription contract. And we had looked at doing directly contracting with Corrector X, we had looked at that first, and then we looked at putting it under the contract, which would be under the procurement services. And I think, and I'll, I'll let our county attorney speak to that, but I believe that we're thinking that we do need to go through the direct contract, so.
Yeah, so, you know, you have to look at these contracts for all the parts that are gonna go under it. And my concern is, if we put something in it that would have to be bid out otherwise, then we might get our hands slapped down the road. So I think what we have to do is carve out the pharmaceuticals part of this contract. Otherwise, this is a good professional procurement act kind of contract. You can't. And so, we have been back and forth with them, we're on a tight timeline, I'm aware of that. But we just don't have an updated contract that carves out the pharmaceuticals. So I'm gonna ask the Commissioners Court table this right now, and let me get that contract from them. We put in a request late last week to them. And then, I wish to ask for at the earliest opportunity, either at, even especially later this week, if we get time to do this. But at this moment, I can't recommend that y'all sign the current contract again.
Make a motion to table.
Got a motion from Leon to table. Second from Greg, all favor say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. 'Tis the season for special needs. A little west of this type of year. Number twelve, consider approve resolution for advanced funding agreement between Liberty County and Texas Department of Transportation for bridge replacement located in Cattle Road one oh nine in White's Bio.
Judge, back in July, Commissioner Carballo came to the court with a contract for an advanced funding agreement between Liberty County and Texas Department for the replacement of the bridge located at CR one oh nine in White's Bio. I'm here today with a resolution to be attached to that advanced funding agreement. This resolution acknowledges Liberty County's ten percent portion of the total cost of that bridge replacement, which is that our portion is estimated to be around sixteen thousand dollars. Well, what this resolution does, it allows us to perform our ten percent. I think it's called participation wage, is what the resolution, the term it uses. It allows us to essentially work off our sixteen thousand dollars, okay? And, yeah, that's about it, it allows us to, to work it off.
Let's rather work it off than.
How bad you want the bridge?
I want this big bridge, pretty bad.
Now, I will say, we have to document it so that the work performed is either equal to that sixteen thousand or greater.
Take a motion to approve.
I think that was booed, I'm gonna get, get it over to him. Got a motion from Bruce, second from Boo, approve it, all favor say aye. Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Catherine, appreciate your help.
Thank you, yes.
Absolutely.
Number thirteen, we're gonna have some discussion on this, and there's a simple reason. I think a whole lot of untrains are floating through the county on what a three eighty one is, and one of the merits of a three eighty one, how three eighty one is even formed, and then again, how it's executed, and how the fund is at least resolves through a three eighty one. Furthermore, what is the life expectancy of a three eighty one? Okay, some people think that this thing is just, everybody in the county pays for it, wrong. Next thing, everybody thinks the three eighty one never goes away, the next answer, wrong. The third thing is the, the amounts that will be paid and how they are at least decided upon per year of the three eighty one agreement, or the cost of the project within three eighty one is retired. So I'm gonna probably be getting Matthew and Rick to give us a little bit insight on this thing. Matthew, what is, what is a three eighty one agreement? I know they have, with the cities, we have a three eighty, you know, agreement that you can exercise, please. You have a three eighty one agreement, you can exercise it, please, with the county.
Yes.
Okay, if you would elaborate somewhat, please.
Generally speaking, the, the, three eighty, three eighty ones are vehicles for economic development, okay? And there's various different mechanisms you can use under there. In this instance, this is an agreement to more or less reduce the taxes in exchange for the building of a sheriff's substation. So it's dollar for dollar val, values coming to the, and leaving the county, okay? So we're, we've agreed to reduce the taxes of, how many tax accounts?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, yeah, twenty thousand tax accounts for the term of this. Three eighty ones have a max life expectancy of ten years. This will not take anywhere close to that. I mean, what, will, best guess is probably.
Next year.
Next year, yeah. So this, in all likelihood, all, all economic likelihood, is we'll have paid for a new sheriff's substation in Plum Grove by next year.
Matthew?
Yes.
Just not a new sheriff's substation, is it, isn't there a our tax office and permitting office and stuff gonna be in there also?
Engineering and permitting, there, I, I can't, honestly, I've taught my head right now, I can't think of all the different, I know that.
No tax office.
No, yeah, no tax office, they, but if there, other than engineering and permitting, other than sheriffs.
I believe the constable is gonna put a person out there, have a, out there also.
Yeah, not a spot for.
Matthew?
Yes.
This would help, this would help those folks up in the northern, north end of that county greatly, wouldn't it?
Without a doubt, yes, so, you know, I think one of, one of the prior Commissioners Court, when we were talking about the E S D, I made a statement that the, the development has placed a burden on so, on, on the various governmental services. The school district, the county services, the cities, et cetera. This is one of the ways, though, that, that developer is working with us to try to expand those services, make it more economically feasible for, for the county to, to provide services.
They also, Matthew, a better quality of life?
Absolutely, and so from, from the developer's perspective, at least what I imagine, he wants to develop and sell tracks. Well, one of the ways you do that is by showing prospective buyers, hey, we've got law enforcement presence there. You know, there's schools being built, I know he has set aside that, that Cleveland I C has built a school there. So this is one of those ways that, that the county, and he can show that there's law enforcement services there. It makes folks feel safer when they buy there. And we, on the other hand, are getting a, something built for us, and we're paying for it, but we're paying for it dollar for dollar. So nobody's getting anything out of this beyond that.
Next question, only retirement of the three eighty one agreement, does that property become property of Liberty County?
Yes, that is correct, we, we will receive a deed to it.
Okay, Rick, you have a map?
Yes.
Team with, I'd like to get over here, put it in front of the camera.
Banner, you wanna? Trying to get it to do it.
Right over here.
Yeah.
Closer, you have to get a little bit closer.
I know they can't hear, but they oughta go to sleep.
Yeah.
Is that good for everybody?
There you go.
Basically, this is the original legal description, we were given some twenty nine tracks of land described. And you can see all the different colors, and basically, these are the subdivisions of Colony Ridge, as they, they stood back in the day. We got C A D, because basically, all we were given was twenty nine legal descriptions, which is attached to three eighty one. So fortunately, I was able to take those legal descriptions, which are just lots and flats, and the Central appraisal district through Sharon Harper's assistance actually converted all these to accounts, tax accounts. And at the time, when we started our, well, let me kind of back up, Matthew said, we didn't necessarily reduce the taxes, the way the three eighty one works, we take the two thousand eighteen established Central appraisal district value on those twenty nine properties, which we established, they established at four hundred eighty three million, one hundred thirty nine thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. Then we take the two thousand nineteen value of those same properties, which according to the Central appraisal district was five hundred seventy million, eight hundred twenty seven thousand, five fifty. And then the difference in those two values is what is called the captured value. And it's the captured value that we apply towards this three eighty one funding. So that was a difference of eighty seven million, six hundred and sixty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. So that's eighty seven, we didn't, we didn't give them taxes on the whole three hundred, or five hundred seventy million. We just gave them the increase in value from eighteen to nineteen, so that was eighty seven million. And when you take our nineteen rate, point five seven eight eight, that comes up with a total, if they paid every account, five hundred seven thousand, five hundred thirty six dollars and forty one cents. But as you know, not everybody pays their taxes. I have to admit, they, they were fairly good on their rates, we, we drew calculations, we found out there was like six hundred delinquents, which is not bad, it's very good in fact, and that was for a hundred and, let's see, hundred and six thousand, one hundred twenty nine dollars, so that has to come off of the five oh seven. Again, we're getting into the weeds, Wayne, you gotta, I'm gonna give you breakdown of all this. But we also found that, when we came to court, we actually found that was seventeen hundred and fifty of dollars were collected of those delinquents, so we added that back in. So today, what I'm coming before the court and recommending is that we actually, it came up to four hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and fifty three cents is what the county's obligation to the three eighty one to pay out. Four hundred what, four hundred, sorry, I didn't read my glasses, four hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and fifty three cents. Now, that'll be deducted from the one point five million, you know, so that leaves roughly one point one million dollars that'd be coming out. Now, I know we talked about twenty thousand accounts, and we actually got the statement from the, the three eighty one. They told us, they sent us the whole twenty thousand accounts, but actually, for two thousand nineteen, we needed to verify all thirteen thousand, one hundred accounts, and how much money was paid in, and it was three million, one hundred ninety six thousand dollars. We did not, and, and there's several there accounts, no payments were received on because they weren't billed in nineteen. So you, you're gonna capture that next year, the difference between nineteen and twenty. So I'm saying, whereas we looked at thirteen thousand, one hundred counts this year, it's gonna be twenty, twenty thousand plus, you know, for next year. Of course, when they did their calculations, their representative said that we owed them nine hundred and seven thousand dollars less the hundred and six thousand of delinquents, meaning that we're nine hundred seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars. If those twenty thousand accounts had paid in nineteen, I agree, but those, those were not paid, not all of those. Only, we only verified on the thirteen thousand, one hundred accounts, this is the difference between eighteen and nineteen. So that's why we, we have a big diff, big difference from them, and they didn't send us anything to pay. They just said if all these accounts, and their values was six hundred and fifty million, and remember, we were five hundred and seventy million. So that's eighty million dollars of accounts we have not collected any taxes on yet, because they weren't billed for nineteen. But they'll show up in twenty. So I'm saying next year is gonna be accelerated, and it may not get the whole billion in half, you'll get, you know, you'll get a pretty good chunk of it, and make your move into the next year.
So potentially, the three eighty one can be retired, possibly next year.
Possibly, and for sure, the next year, you know, and I don't know, because these payments are recorded every August, so it's, it's after we look at it. But again, having to go through thirteen thousand, one hundred counts and listen to each one of them, we're trying to simplify the process, I think C A D is now labeling these accounts, and they're gonna actually do some figures for us for the first year. And that's why it took us a little longer to get these things done with COVID and everything else.
One more clarification, does anybody in the City of Liberty pay in this account?
Liberty or Plum Grove?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Does anybody in City of Liberty pay?
Oh, no, sir, no, only these accounts, these twenty, these twenty nine properties, because the boundaries have to be decided when you do the three eighty one, that's as much a part of how much you're doing versus who's involved in it. So these are the, and, and my understanding is that they can't even add them unless there's some kind of process to add to it, but.
So, since you mentioned the city of Plum Grove, is anybody in the city of Plum Grove having this?
I don't see the city of Plum Grove, I know y'all can't see the map, but I have. It's, none of these are in the city of Plum Grove, these are all what is known as the, the four or five subdivisions of Colony Ridge and developed land that's probably has been developed in the lots, or the flat's been extended, and that's what happened between nineteen and twenty. Some of this six hundred acres of timberland was valued at X dollars, now they converted into, you know, fifteen hundred lots or something, so it's really gonna have.
So we could safely assume the Plum Grove, city of Plum Grove.
So we could safely assume the Plum Grove, city of Plum Grove, want to contribute to this?
I know they don't. They're not on this map, you know. I don't know that, uh, the boundaries, if they've done any E T G, E T J's or E T J's. I got a spare times report. But what's been presented to me is city of Plum Grove is not, now I'm not an authority on that. I'm just going to go by, this is the map that Central appraisal district converted to and gave us all these lots, which helped us greatly get these, these things done.
So let me have a more question. Does the city of Plum Grove derive benefits from this three eighty-one with the, with the sole purpose of it having a, an annex, the sheriff's department, the constable's office, and for Liberty County Engineering?
That lovely question?
No, it's, it's just a yes or no.
I would say no. To my knowledge, no.
They don't get any benefit from it?
Well, I, I would say if I could do.
I'm not a.
Yeah, so the, uh, city of Plum Grove has no police department.
Right.
Uh, Liberty County Sheriff's, uh, Department provides all law enforcement services in that area. So the benefit that the city of Plum Grove is getting is that they have closer law presence there.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, my understanding is going to be quite facility. I mean, uh, uh, it, it, it's very needed. The sheriff's office definitely needs it.
Judge, guess, um, could we tangle this and so that we can just double check the numbers and then revisit this next commission of court?
That's going to be up to the commissioners, really. It, uh, I understand your point. It, uh.
I was like, I mean, just, just so we can, we can verify a lot of numbers are correct. I want to prove a number that's, that we tomorrow find out is an inaccurate number.
We've spent a lot of time on this. I know we're through verifying this. I'm going to look at what the central appraisal district gave me. Um, and again, I think the difference is, it's just, I mean, we have over seven thousand accounts that paid no two thousand nineteen taxes that are included in the, the deal. I, you know, I feel comfortable that we are, we were, you know.
You're comfortable with your number?
We're, we're comfortable with what the central appraisal, I can't, I'm not going to challenge this, the central appraisal district's information. And, and technically, the, uh, the three eighty-one was supposed to tell us who paid, not if everybody paid what it was. And, and again, I understand we took that on and we did due diligence on it. And clearly you can see there's various of, of seven thousand accounts and eighty-seven million dollars of value. I'm not disputing that the value's not there. I don't think it meets the, the terms of the three eighty-one for this year. And really, when they made their request to put the two hundred and seven thousand to offset the completion, the other six hundred thousand was just going into their account. So to me, it was basically, it was two hundred and seven thousand to, to match the percentage of completion. And the other six hundred thousand, if they got the nine hundred, was to go to be deposited into their account for the rest of this proceeds. So that's what challenged me to go in and, and do a little bit of work on it. And we have, we have spent a lot of man-hours going through each of these accounts. Um, they have the same information as far as who paid, uh, but we, we actually verified payment and applied it. And, and I think the difference is when those accounts, if they paid in nineteen or not.
Do you see a problem in, in where in Colony Ridge?
No, no, I, I, I have no problems.
If they are owed the money.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, but to me, uh, the audit department has put it on me to certify that this is supposed to be paid. And, and to me, I've given you my certification on it. And to me, I don't see any changes from that.
If we approve this amount today, you're going to have next week, you know, y'all together find the additional evidence. You can bring that back and add the additional. Is that, is that correct?
I don't think there's anything prohibiting that.
No, I wouldn't see any issue with that. Um, it's just, we're open to sit down and, you know, figure out whatever details, uh, or concerns there might be, though, of course.
In that case, that's fine. I do want to make one clarification. When he says deposit that extra money, the extra six hundred into an account, it's not our account. That's an account held by, I just wanted to make it clear to the rest of the court. That's not, he's not giving that money to me. It's going to an account that's held by the county until those funds are spent and then to reimburse the next officer.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't mean to intend it was going to your account. It was, it was going, it wasn't going directly to them to pay because the building wasn't as full of completion, which it may be more than that now. That was back some six months ago. So, uh, again, the letter that we got, uh, basically gave all the information. I didn't make any of that, uh, distinction. And this came from their firm that actually presented this to it. And, and quite honestly, they worked with us because it was the first thing it was supposed to be due in March and, and August. And then they agreed to, you know, extend that. And they even agreed to extend it before. So I, I, I'm not saying they're not trying to get the information to us, but the burden is who paid, not if everybody paid. This is how you, you know, how it is. So we had actually do the verification on who paid, money received. And that's where we got this three million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand by going through thirteen thousand, one hundred accounts.
So what amount is due today?
Four oh three.
Four oh three, one sixty, fifty?
Four oh three, one sixty and fifty-three cents.
And if there is any owed more or less to them, we can still bring it up.
I said, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think we, I think we've got a pretty fluid agreement here because we, you know, we're trying to, this is the first year we're doing it. And quite honestly, this, the mechanisms weren't set up two years ago when we signed this thing.
Yeah.
It's just kind of coming together now. And, and with all the stuff that's gone on since January, you know, it's been a little. But I feel good about what we have here by working with C A D and working with the three eighty-one. That this is the difference between eighteen and nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve, amen? Got a motion to approve? And I think, was that moving the second?
Yes.
Got a motion to approve, second. Motion to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, please. That motion carries unanimously. One quick question, uh, Matthew and Rick, how many of three eighty-one's we have?
At this. Have we actually funded, uh?
I believe we have.
That's TURs.
That's TURs.
I don't know of any other one that we've actually paid. Now, what's, what do we have with the rail yard?
That's TURs.
That's TURs also. Uh, I think this is really our only true three eighty-one.
Yeah, somebody may have mentioned the other day that, uh, we have agreements with, uh, Colony Ridge, Cleveland and Dayton. Well, no, the county has a TURs agreement with Cleveland, the city of Cleveland as a developer.
Obviously not with Colony Ridge.
But, uh, that's the one.
We just funded that the other day.
That's random reserve. And we also have a TURs agreement with city of Dayton and, no, it's in.
Right, but no funding, no, no taxes and all this.
I'll make clarify. There's been a lot of misinformation out there about this.
There is a lot of different tax, even the financing agreements, like, you know, it is a different kind of payment altogether. Because really you're taking tax dollars and putting them back in, you're taking them out of the counties you use and you're simply putting them in this, uh, in this, in this area for this approval. And again, the, the tax office, uh, we chose not to put a tax office location, even though it was offered. It just felt like what we would have to staff up, what we had to have more of than anything else.
Is Rick later up or just I let you go up?
Yeah, it just, to me, it just looked like more than we could handle at this point, so.
I just want to get those clarifications out there because there's a whole lot of bad information floating around about.
And this is one. This is working like it's supposed to be working. It's, it's really serving the purpose.
Uh, number fourteen, somebody recut the following accounts. Number one was a one oh seven, five, six, two. We got a number sitting down with about a five thousand, six or thirty-nine dollars, forty-eight cents. The next one was number two, three, one, nine, seven, three. Kent Hill, D U B, that is. LLC in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, seventy-two cents. The third one is number four, seven, four, six, one. San Loretta LLC in the amount of twenty-eight hundred dollars, forty-four, twenty-eight hundred and forty-four dollars, fifty-four cents. And the fourth one was six, eight, four, five, three, Resource Management in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars, forty-eight cents. These are just, uh, a couple of names, correct?
Yes, sir. Look, not good. We've been given out more money, it's not good. So, let's see. Of course, the refunds over twenty-five hundred require commission court approval. Uh, I have the details. If you have any questions, let each, any one of, but they all, um, applied for the, the refund. A lot of times, you know, the third party's paid the taxes and they paid the taxes and it gets across to the bailer or something. But, uh, you know, there's all these. Yes, all of these have been run through the deal, given back the money. We can't keep it twice. So if it considers a refund, you got to get the time here and start paying.
Motion to approve. Yeah. Motion Bruce, second grade to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, please.
Thank you.
That motion. Purchasing a woman, steel craft, heavy-duty grill guard and including installation that takes part in public safety. Liberty County Trooper at a cost of six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Uh, maybe most of that's yours. That's, that's on your account. Correct?
Leon came here.
Leon?
Yes. Yes. Jay?
Yeah, no, yours, yeah.
Okay, I, I received a request from, uh, uh, trooper, uh, Daniel Hebert, um, for the purchase of this grill. I found that, that trooper Hebert, uh, is the only trooper that we have in Liberty County that is certified and what's referred to as the, uh, pit maneuver. And, um, uh, he's asked that Liberty County assist him with the purchase of this grill and its installation. I've spoken with Wayne about this. Wayne has indicated that we do have the money for it. So I'll make the motion. We approve this, uh, request.
All right. Got motion from Leon, second grade to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, please. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen, consider approved, purchase of a rolling, eighteen ninety-eight R and D, fifty-ton lowboy trailer from, uh, individual Daniel Dula, cost thirty-five thousand bucks.
And I, Jay, um, we've been in, uh, we've been trying to, uh, locate a good used, uh, heavy-duty haul trailer. And we ran across this one. Uh, it's in immaculate condition. Uh, we feel like that, uh, it's been, uh, it's an excellent, uh, purchase for Liberty County. Um, and I make the recommendation that, uh, uh, we approve this purchase.
Thank you, motion to approve. Motion to approve, second grade to approve. All favor say aye. Any need to go any technical station this time? At this one?
Yeah.
We still got it.
On the, the target, uh, the target was special meaning? If a lot, I don't think that would still live. That's, yeah. Still got time to wait.
Yeah.
Yeah. But then we make, we just have to list all the, all the, they. Ready? Did you care business?
We still got seventeen, nineteen, ninety.
No wonder I missed him. It's been a long, long weekend. Number seventeen, L O E. Uh, consider approved solicitation for R F Es for re-renewal. There you are.
We had multiple year contracts. I think the re-renewal was our goal against everybody saying. Need the R F E. We also have, we view some H G A C has contracts, cloud has, cyber has some contracts, but it would be R F Es. We compare all of those together. Same thing with this one.
Okay.
Just like we did last year, but we needed it last year.
Well, two years ago. Yeah. We always need it. Okay, all right. Number seventeen, uh, consider approved solicitation, R F Es for re-renewal, uh, was court. Motion to approve. Motion Bruce, second grade to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, please. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen, consideration for R F Es for re-monitoring. Basically the same thing.
Thank you, motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second grade, so we can monitor this stuff. All favor say aye. Likewise. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nineteen, free purchase of two vans for Liberty County Jail.
Just on here because we were discussing three vans, but I think Oxford, uh, started a lot of that. And we found two, uh, apparently in the split with probation between Chambers and Liberty County, they have an excess of vehicles. Uh, they have two, two thousand and five transport vans and a seventeen Explorer that they want to get rid of.
Are you ready now?
Well, we got to put the cages in them. Uh, they don't have a transport cage in them, uh, but they, uh, I don't know if the board should get the cost to them yet. Uh, so I don't know what that's going to be.
We're brother-in-law provides, hoping.
I, I, I'm hoping.
Yeah.
Uh, but how do you feel about possible purchasing one new van? Yeah, so I mean, they're, they're both two thousand and fives, uh, back and forth to the courthouse. We got to make another run to be built. I, I don't know if we want to put a two thousand and five van with seventeen contracts in it.
You got a transfer new one too?
Uh, thirty-eight thousand, I think, so it did. That's rigged out.
And how many were there?
Fifteen.
Is that?
Fifteen, the terminal oven and the distance, the distance seat, the oven. I'm sure I can answer that question. Don't transport inmates on that. I just get the vehicle. Well, that answer is. If we learn one, it's going to cost you fifty months before we get one. So what we're doing is trying to find people and buy for it. H G A C has at least one on the lot.
We have anything right now?
That was, that was one of the reasons why I looked at probation with, uh, this, they have them and want to get rid of them. So this would get us out of a bind. Here we go.
So what we're looking at now, one unit, one new van?
Two units, but they, so the warden said she really needs three of them to make a run to the hospital or something. And we were thinking that, that the explorer would be a good hospital run to guards and a inmate back would be better than transport van that didn't get very good gas mileage.
But do we have the, you know, the amounts from Chambers County that we know of?
No, that's why I'm waiting on the board to give me a price on it, the mileage on them. And I think one van is here. It's a Dodge Sprinter van, one ton. And it's sitting over there behind the, uh, the old jail. And she's got another one in Cleveland that they're not using.
So the commission's court today could approve of the buy boards and then the contingent on, on finding out whether or not, uh, there is a possibility of, of buying one from Chambers County.
That was the dish. I'll go ahead and approve the purchase of three. His work's up by and they don't.
Make a motion to approve. Got a motion, Bruce, second grade to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, please. That motion carries unanimously. Harold, I have a purchasing question for you, can you come up a little closer? In purchasing, a question came up this weekend about why do we buy, or why does any government, any, buy equipment from out of county? You know, why not buy in county? And the, the answer would be, we buy off government by board.
Yeah.
First of all, we go for the little bit, no matter where it is. It might be in Dallas Fort Worth, it might be in Liberty, Texas, if they even have it, and they participate. Correct?
Yeah. We used to, trucks and vehicles, we pretty well used to do in county, you know, just bid packet, the whole thing. They, either it wouldn't be it, or one or two might be it. They were never cheaper than the by board, so prior courts, we just started going with by board or HGAC, but that's always an option.
Yeah.
I could say we bid it out, the locals, and just say local, we bid it out to dealers. And then we also had a by board price and HGAC price. By board HGAC is always cheaper. Do you think that?
Yeah. And the next part of the question is, buying in county does not mean that we, the county pays sales tax for this equipment. I believe it's IRS code five oh one G, we're tax exempt, so there's no sales tax paid. Want to clarify, that was a question that was thrown on my lap, and I want to make sure that people understand.
It's always an option, you definitely, you price all.
Yeah. Number twenty, agree request for Prosperity Bank to deviate from depository contract with respect to interest rate. Only required to see the. Jim? Are you there?
I'm here, Judge. And Prosperity Bank has requested a deviation from our current depository contract only for the account that has the current issue of certificates of obligation, the twenty five million dollars is the only account that they want to deviate from because this money was not expected. And the current floor that Prosperity Bank provides to us on our money market accounts is one point seven five percent. The rate that they would like to drop down to on the certificates of obligation is point seven five percent. So this is a business decision that the court needs to make, and I'm just presenting this on behalf of Prosperity Bank, and the letter that you have in your packet is from Marshall LaFour requesting that reduction in the rate.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
What, what, what's your recommendations?
Well, of course, I mean, you know, if you're running your own business and you've got a contract with somebody for a one point seven five percent interest rate on an account, I don't know if you're gonna let them drop the, drop the rate on you for another one, so, I mean, it, it's a business decision that the court's gonna have to make, and, you know.
Judge, I have not looked at this question, but in my mind, there are some questions about whether we can.
Yeah.
We table this, I would recommend it, I will address it soon.
Got a motion, Bruce, to table. Got a second Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, names, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty one, consider to approve emergency ambulance service agreement, Liberty County EMS, replacement of an existing agreement with the same entity effective immediately, terminating on September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, in which increased funding is provided in exchange for increased services, no requirements. Matthew, I need you to look over this.
Yes. So, uh, you know, it's been in the media quite a bit, you're labeling, understandable.
You're right.
The Liberty County EMS, as y'all are well, well aware, provides unincorporated part of the county under contract with us. Uh, in, in small bit of history, it was, what, three hundred thousand? About three years ago.
Two fifty five.
Two fifty five, that's what it was. We increased that to.
About three hundred thousand.
Yeah, by another three thousand, a year before last. But they are, and, and having discussions with them, they're just in a, a budget crisis. And in part brought on by coronavirus. And so, you know, in order to maintain services, they're gonna need more money. And that's, they've come asking for more money. They, they have gone down to two trucks, and, and that is, from what I'm gathering, greatly in response. What you have for you, should, should you wish to do it, does a number of things. It increases funding by four hundred thousand dollars per year, or another thirty three thousand dollars per month, bringing the total monthly to seventy seven thousand nine hundred sixteen sixty six. But it, I have, perhaps I've gotten with our fire marshal, kind of gone over some things we can hope to expect from that. The, the biggest kind of ticket item there is that it would, under the new terms, it would increase to three trucks and a supervisor paramedic response unit, which is, would be something with a higher level paramedic supervisor in a, in a, you know, a small vehicle that can get to scene very quickly. Go ahead and start triage, and go and start giving air while the, you know, the truck's on the ship. So it increases from two to three, plus that supervisor paramedic response unit. The old contract had a annual cancellation option, but you had to give ninety days before the end of the, the budget year, okay? The new contract is not to put it forth, it, it would have a termination by, upon ninety days written notes. There are some other parameters where it's sixty, or even thirty, or even immediate, that those would be under extreme circumstances such as fraud, or some sort of crime, but it's something I'm not necessarily worried about. It does maintain the ability of the county to audit the books of every, and to require monthly reports, and dispel those out. And then lastly, it has language requiring reasonable response. You, you look at the language yourself, but it more, it allows some flexibility, because we all understand that, that emergency services at many times, whether it's law enforcement, ambulance, fire, et cetera, it's sometimes gets backed up for extenuating circumstances anybody's control. I'm not trying to pick on anybody for those sorts of things. But what it does require is that in a single month out of any two month period, they demonstrate no problem failure to respond. Okay? It does provide a benchmark saying what reasonable could be. Those are response times for our trauma service area as published in a certain document that I posted, which is an interesting read, and it's the, it's called Licked Officials Guide, the EMS. It goes through a lot of the turmoil and concerns, you know, that EMS has to deal with, so. But I, I offer for that, that for your review, for your consideration, you can tell me, you know, Matthew, we will, we as commission court would approve this, but I don't like this provision, or I want to change the provision. You know, whatever you all want to do, but I put it there just to give you some options.
Does it, does it state, I'm going through it, does it state how many services or ambulances will be given on the contract?
Yes, three. So three trucks, fully staffed, fully equipped, plus that supervisor paramedic response unit.
You know, this, this is in September thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
Yes.
They've had to increase this, but as population grows, we can be looking at the same thing next year. The hour of our government road. Just language terms, basically, we need to raise this to emergency service services.
Yeah, yes, yeah. There are, my understanding is that, you know, I did a little research on Google, kind of seeing what, what the EMS industry or the same coronavirus, and a number of them are finding very, very difficult. As y'all may know, you know, you wouldn't think about it like this, but hospitals have suffered tremendously because a lot of people aren't going to the hospital anymore, so similarly, people just aren't calling the ambulance, otherwise they perhaps would. And so it's, it's very difficult.
Hey, Matthew?
Yes?
We approved this this morning, this would, this would only benefit the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, wouldn't it?
Yes, I, I believe that there is a legitimate public purpose here, I mean, we're, what, what we're faced with, my understanding is, otherwise, they're gonna have to cut crews and cut trucks down to two, and, which is, for a very brief time, my understanding is what they had to be. And so with that, now our prior contract said two trucks is fine, that they shall have staff and equip two trucks. So they were, they were complying with that aspect, but nevertheless, the response times are gonna stack up, and we're gonna, we're gonna have issues for it, so it's, it's, it's very, very real concern.
Go on. I'm shared to you.
Yes.
We do have this funding?
Yes, I've already put a budget amendment in for this month of September, and on the budget that we're finishing up now, I've already got it included in next year's budget for the additional four hundred thousand, or thirty three thousand a month.
So, and I will add this to it, ordinarily, whenever we use contracts, we like to have the other party sign first, and then I, you know, I or whoever brings the commission's court. This is a little different in that we're, we're trying to operate on a quick timeline. So the Liberty County, that's not, this would, at this moment, be an offer under these terms, and they could accept, go ahead and sign an excuse, but we got a, a, an agreement, or they could decline, or start negotiating, so I just want y'all to understand where that's at.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion from Leon, second Bruce to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, names, that motion carries unanimously. Now, take your seat. No, 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 I don't get this. Thirty one more minutes. Got a motion, Bruce, two. Two seconds. Second Greg, all favor say aye.
You have another meeting tomorrow?
Yeah. Well, it's even better than last year. Okay, so.
Matthew?
Matthew, Matthew. All right, it's, twelve twenty five, we're back in regular session, the recanting commissioners court, and we have some considerations and approvals to do regarding potential litigation. We discussed this one, it's court's pleasure at this time.
When I recommend that we give Matthew the authority to recommend a legal counsel to handle this, pardon for the county. Second.
Okay, the motion for the court to allow Matthew to negotiate and recommend legal counsel regarding road closures. Road closures.
I may add, that's the earlier state.
Yes. At the early state. All favor say aye. Likewise, names, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Greg, all favor say aye.